At this time, we'll call to order the Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting for November 6, 2017. We'll recognize Vice Chairman Ronnie Reese for an invocation and Commissioner Ryan Mayberry for the pledge of allegiance. So if you would, please stand.
I'll pray. Father Lord, we come to you this evening, and we thank you for the good day that you've given. We thank you for protection for Alexander County and its citizens. Praise you to ever protect our emergency services, EMS, EMTs, fire, rescue, Sheriff's Department, Police Department, Highway Patrol, putting themselves on the line every day for us. Lord, I pray you'd help us tonight, make wise decisions that will move Alexander County forward economically and business, and just give us wisdom to do what's right. In your name we pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, do we have any commissioner reports at this time? I will state that Dr. Pill is going to be here. He's just gonna be a few minutes late.
Well, I'll just say we're gonna probably cover it, but I've been with my job, kind of riding a lot of places and seeing, you know, a lot of the damage. And that storm on the 23rd, you know, covered a pretty big territory and, you know, a lot of places have some damage. I was just telling Commissioner Lael, got a tree on a rental house, been trying to get it off. The weather hadn't been good to get it done, so right now is a good time if you're in the tree business, so, you know. But something that nobody thinks about, just glad there's really no lives lost from our Alexander County citizen. There was a utility worker who, you know, lost his life. That's a sad thing for his family and for those things, but I'm just thankful that we didn't have it really worse than what it was. But there's a lot of property damage and a lot of things that'll be going on for a long time, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, gentlemen, in front of you, you've got your agenda, so I entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So move.
Got a motion?
Second.
I have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, likewise. Okay, public comment. We do have one person signed up. Susan Jenkins, is Ms. Jenkins here? Okay, so, all right, so I assume she may not be here tonight, so move that to the next meeting if she so chooses. At this time, I'd like to recognize Sherri Long with Western Peacock Council of Governments. Public hearing, CBDG Stony Point wastewater project resolution in public hearing meeting minutes. So at this time, I would request a motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to open the public hearing pertaining to the sewer/wastewater --
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed, likewise. Ms. Long?
Good evening. Tonight, we're here to discuss the community development block grant program, and in order to comply with the rules and regulations of the program, I have to read this three-page notice. And I apologize profusely, and as fast as I talk, I will go. But I will answer any questions you might have about the project, but in order for it to comply with the rules and regulations of the program, it's mandated that we go through this, the three pages that are presented to you. This public hearing on November 6, 2017 will provide an explanation and description of the 2017 North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality Community Development Block Grant Infrastructure Program. We are present here to discuss the purpose of the public hearing for Alexander County's CDBGI school funding application. The purpose of the public hearing is to obtain citizens' views and allow a response from the public to the funding proposals and answer any questions posed by citizens. This public hearing will cover the county's community development block grant needs, development of the proposed activities, and review of the program compliance before the submission of the county's CDBGI funding application to the state of North Carolina. The county proposes requesting funding from DEQ CDBGI program for the Stony Point Elementary School Wastewater Project. The purposes of the CDBGI grant program are, the purposes of the CDBG grant program are to improve the quality of life for low and moderate income people by providing safe, clean environment and clean drinking water through water and sewer infrastructure improvements and extensions of service, to benefit a residential area where at least 51% of the beneficiaries are low to moderate income, as defined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, to perform eligible activities to minimize displacement, and to provide displacement assistance as necessary. For the fiscal year 2017, the CDBGI school funding is available, is expected to be $4.5 million with a maximum available grant of up to $1 million. Applications for funding are received by November 8. This is a one-time funding cycle. The CDBG program is able to fund a wide variety of community development activities. The state of North Carolina has chosen to fund two activities: water and sewer infrastructure and economic development projects that lead to job creation or retention. The infrastructure program, or CDBGI, program can be found, can fund a range of water and sewer improvements and economic development activities included but not limited to the following: water, projects that resolve water loss in distribution systems; projects that extend public waters to areas of contaminated wells; projects that extend the water lines to areas with dry wells; projects that assist with lower water pressure in public water systems; projects that regionalize two or more water systems; projects that rehabilitate or replace a water treatment plant; and wastewater, projects that resolve inflow and infiltrations to collection systems and surcharges from pump stations and manholes; projects that extend public sewer to areas with failed septic tanks; projects that rehabilitate a wastewater treatment plant to allow for greater efficiency and compliance with regulations. The county is seeking an amount of CDBGI funds not to exceed $894,750 for the Stony Point Elementary School wastewater project. The purpose of the county's request is to construct a pump station with standby power and approximately 2,900 linear feet of four-inch force main, 600 feet of eight-inch gravity sewer to connect the school to the new line, and abandon the two existing septic systems to allow Stony Point Elementary School to function at a more efficient level. The project proposed by Alexander County has been discussed with the Alexander County School Board and the Town of Taylorville for years. Informal community meetings were held in the project area to inform citizens of a potential project and to get feedback from the residents. A total of 100% of the CDBGI funding will be used to benefit low and moderate income people. The project area in Alexander County was income surveyed. 75% of the total service area responded, with over 68% of the households were determined to be income-eligible. The project area includes the student, the project area includes the students, the faculty and the staff households of the Stony Point Elementary School. The range of activities covered by CDBGI funds for the Stony Point Elementary School wastewater project include construction, engineering, construction administration and observation, legal activities, and surveying. If Alexander County has awarded the CDBGI grant, the county is required to adhere to federal procurement requirements and other federal regulations, which include the Americans with Disabilities Act, Section 504 survey, Davis Bacon and related labor acts, adoption and submission of a citizens' participation plan, adoption and submission of an equal opportunity plan, adoption and submission of a fair housing plan, adoption and submission of a language access plan, adoption and submission of a relocation assistance plan, adoption and submission of a Section 3 plan, and an excessive force provision. The state of North Carolina requires that if Alexander County receives the CDBG grant funding, that the county will certify that they will comply with the requirements of the general displacement and relocation policies for the CDBG grant funding. This policy assists low and moderate income people with costs associated with the relocation and/or displacement, should relocation be necessary due to project activities. CDBG funds can be used for those costs if necessary. No displacement or relocation will occur as a result of this proposed CDBG grant activity, and Alexander County will conform this tonight by this public meeting. In the past, Alexander County has applied and received funding for the following CDBG projects: in 2012, you received a $400,000 scattered site housing rehabilitation program; in 2010, you received a $389,105 community revitalization program; and also in 2010, you received a $250,000 small business entrepreneurial assistance project. The county will submit the CDBGI school program application for Stony Point Elementary School wastewater project on November 7 after this meeting. The CDBGI school program application will be available for review during normal business hours at the county administration building at 621 Loudon Road, Taylorville. Additional information is available from your county manager, Mr. Rick French. Should anyone have complaints or grievances regarding the subject of the public hearing, they should address those to Mr. French within 10 days of this meeting, or November 16. With a written response will be provided back to written complaints and grievances by the county manager within 10 days.
Take a breath.
Yeah. We're practicable.
Okay, are there any questions from Ms. Long regarding this grant, either from the Board of Commissioners and/or the general public since it's a public hearing? I guess, Ms. Long, one question, and this meeting was originally scheduled for the night of the storm at Stony Point School, and I'm assuming some residents may ask the question or businesses, will this line be available for them to tap onto at some point in the future, or does --
The way the project, it is designed, we're basically feeding to a gravity pump below the school, and that pump station might be able to take additional fluid at some time, but all we're basically doing is constructing the pump at the bottom of the hill, and we're pushing it back up to the Stony Point sure-tape pump station. So it will all be force main, except just a little bit of gravity that will come outside the school, and eliminate two septic tanks that the school currently has.
So at this time, none?
It's just the pump. The pump, and the pump is there. If you wanted to go back in a future round, infrastructure round, and apply for that neighborhood, that is a possibility, but right now, all of this will be addressing is that one, one school and that one pump station.
Okay, thank you.
And that's what our plan is, to do that.
Right. And again, I thought --
Successful.
I know that when we were gonna have the meeting, I felt like there might have been some folks from the Stony Point community that might have been there for that and might have wanted that question. Sorry, I had that.
We're chipping away at it. One pump station at a time.
This is progress, there is no doubt.
Well, that gets it under the railroad. It hasn't been there before, is that correct?
It gets, well, it's --
Yes.
Goes under the railroad, across the road down --
Right, and up to the other pump station.
And that's a big --
You know, getting that.
Yeah, it's a big deal getting it under the railroad, actually, so.
Okay, any questions from the general audience here? Okay, hearing none at this, Mr. French?
No, sir.
Okay. Hearing none at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for the CDBGI grant for Stony Point.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion concerning this motion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, likewise. So at this time, let me read the resolution, and then I'd entertain a motion for us to adopt it. So if you'll bear with me, it's not as long as Sherri's, thank goodness. Whereas, this is Alexander County Resolution, whereas Title I of the Federal Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended, has established the U.S. Housing and Urban Development HUD Community Development Block Grants CDBG program, and has authorized the making of grants to aid eligible units of government funding the cost of construction, replacement, rehabilitation of water and wastewater infrastructure, and that the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, NCDQ Division of Water Infrastructure, DWI, was delegated the authority by the state legislator to administer the water and wastewater infrastructure portion of the state grant monies received from the U.S. HUD CDBG program by Session Law 2013-360, Section 15.15A, as amended by Section 5.3 of Session Law 2013-363, and whereas Alexander County has need for and intends to construct a wastewater collection system project described as a Stony Point Elementary School wastewater project to install a pump station-related sewer lines to serve the school, and whereas Alexander County intends to request state grant assistance for the project. Now therefore be it resolved by the Alexander County Board of Commissioners, the Alexander County, the applicant will adopt and place into effect on or before completion of the project a schedule of fees and charges and other available funds, which will provide adequate funds for proper operation, maintenance, and administration of the system, that the applicant will provide for efficient operation maintenance of the project on completion of construction thereof, that Rick French, county manager, the authorized official and successor so titled, is hereby authorized to execute and file an application on behalf of the applicant with the state of North Carolina for a grant to aid in the construction of the project described above, that the authorized official and successor so titled is hereby authorized and directed to furnish such information as the appropriate state agency may request in connection with such application or the project to make the assurances as contained above, and to execute such other documents as that may be required in connection with the application, that the applicant has substantially complied or will substantially comply with all the federal, state, and local laws, rules, regulations, and ordinance applicable to the project and to the federal and state grants and loans pertaining thereto. Adopted this the 6th day of November 2017, Alexander County, North Carolina. I would entertain a motion to accept this, adopt this resolution.
Make a motion to accept the resolution as stated.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? And please don't ask me to reread that.
What was that second one?
Okay, hearing no discussion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, likewise. Motion passes. Now, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the public hearing minutes that Ms. Long read, has read.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the public hearing minutes as stated by Ms. Sherri Long.
Okay, have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, okay. You have a motion. Is there any discussion of this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, likewise. Okay, thank you. Ms. Long?
One question, is there a, when do you expect to get an answer on this?
I would assume probably the first part of the year. What happened is that state, they gave us extra permission because we're missing our public hearing deadline because of tornado. They review them, and then they have community meetings, and they have one in January, so I imagine based on the cycle that they've worked in the past, it might be January. It might be a little sooner because those funds are, they're leftover funds that they've had from previous grants. They just kind of combine them all together to do this, so maybe we'll learn a little sooner, but I would, I would say January.
Okay, all right, thank you.
One thing I'd say, the rescheduling of the meeting may be my fault because I called Jamie about 5 o'clock. We're supposed to meet at 6, I think, and I said, "Jamie, are we still having our meeting?" It takes me about 45 minutes to get from my house to Stony Point Elementary, and I need to start heading that way. And she said, "I don't know, we're all held up in the basement." And anyway.
And we were on until 5:15.
Yeah, I was on the I-40.
And so, she said, "Let me make some phone calls, I'll let you know." And I think, yeah.
We appreciate their leniency based on the circumstances to allow us to be a little late.
I would appreciate it.
Ms. Sherri, thank you for all your work.
At this time, I'll recognize John Pilket, Director of Planning and Development, and we need to request a motion to go into public hearing, rezoning Case 17-4 Baxter Hayes for Brushy Mountain Golf Course LLC. So I'd entertain a motion going public here.
Mr. Chairman, I move to go into public hearing.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, likewise. All right, John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the board. As noted, this is a rezoning request submitted by Baxter Hayes for BMGC LLC. The applicant is requesting to rezone two parcels of land from the current zoning district of Commercial-Recreational, which is the golf course property, and R20 Residential, which is the property due west of the golf course that abuts Little River. It consists of approximately 200-plus acres, excuse me, the owner's intent is to develop it into a planned residential development. As noted on the staff report, all the land uses surrounding the property are residential, and the zoning districts within 100 feet of that property as well are all residential. Two of those parcels are actually zoned by the Town of Taylorville zoning, but still residential zoning. It's his intent to develop the two parcels into a planned residential development. His request is to rezone the property from those current zoning districts, Commercial-Recreational and R20, to R820, which is residential-agricultural. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on October the 5th and was unanimous in their recommendation to approve the rezoning request, was based on the fact that the rezoning is consistent with the future land use map in the 2008 comprehensive plan, and also consistent with the goals and policies adopted by the plan, and that the request will not negatively impact the surrounding property in regards to residential development. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. I did have a few phone calls asking why they're residential-agricultural, but because of what the applicant wants to do, that type of development is allowed in that district. So that's why we're asking for that. And you may recall that the CR district was initially done to address the golf course property and also the property at Old Steel. Both of those properties were rezoned to that to address the clubhouse and their ability to hold certain events and that sort of thing. But now, with the way things are now, that it wouldn't be any issue.
In the information here, it says additional public hearings by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Commissioners. We would have to have additional public hearings.
Yes, sir, and I'm glad you pointed that out. The planned development that he's requesting would also require a public hearing to be held at the Planning Commission level, and then they would also make a recommendation, just like the rezoning, to the county commissioners. And at that time, Mr. Hayes would submit a site plan that would have to be approved by the county commissioners and the planning commission.
So the planned development's gonna have smaller lots, or something like that?
It wouldn't necessarily be smaller lots, as it would be --
Smaller roadway?
Yeah, actually, just like a, almost townhome type. Don't have anything real specific. I think Mr. Hayes is here, he could speak to it more. I just, I hate to say specifically.
Right, well, I'm just asking a question, but what we're looking at today, really, that has no bearing on this, so.
Correct, correct. This is just the rezoning, so that he's able to apply for that conditional use permit.
Just for my edification, I think I know, this runs along 1112, back in there.
Yeah, the second parcel of land is, yeah, west of that, and then the larger, where the golf course is, is the other parcel.
Any questions? Anybody in the audience? More questions? Anybody up here?
Just an opinion, I think it's, I know, well, I don't know, but given the climate of the golf business, and the fact that I don't ever play anymore, and I used to play every single day, you've got, you gotta do things to generate other revenue streams, or at least I would think so. I don't own a golf course, but, and I think if something ended up happening similar to what's in the information that we have, that it would be, it definitely wouldn't be a bad thing for Taylorville, Illinois, or the county.
Right, good thing.
Did something very similar about 20 years ago or 30 years ago in Davie County, and it's now what we know as Bermuda Run, so, I mean, it can be a very big thing.
Thanks, very positive for the county.
Well, and if you look at the statistics on where our influx of future residents are gonna be, not that certain age demographics don't mean you're gonna have a townhome, but as your rule, that is an appealing product. This would segue perfect with that. I think it's very exciting for our community.
I'll be about ready for one by then.
It's not bad, trust me. Mowing grasses, oh, having to mow grass, it's not bad, so.
You live in the life, you know?
Okay, any other questions? Okay, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Likewise accordingly. Now, I guess we need to --
And I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning request due to, the rezoning request is consistent with the future land use map in the 2008 comprehensive plan, and is also consistent with the goals and policies adopted in the plan. The request will not negatively impact the surrounding with regards to residential development. I'll make that in form of a motion.
Okay, is your motion, gentlemen? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, two seconds.
Third double, three, four.
Okay, is there any discussion about the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, likewise. Thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
That's awesome. At this time, I'll recognize Russell Green, our Emergency Services Director. He's gonna tell us a little bit about that storm that messed up our public hearing a couple weeks ago, as well as a lot of people's property.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as always, it's a privilege to get to come and report the good work from our emergency service folks, but also tonight, we want to talk about what actually happened in Alexander County on Monday, October the 23rd, as Commissioner Lael pointed out, interrupted your public hearing because it did something to the power in the Stony Point community. Chad, if you'll pull up that next slide, this is a map that our GIS department put together, and I'm sorry your monitors are not working, gentlemen, but it basically shows you, the storm came into county at River's Edge, off of the lake, near the old R&amp;N Marina area, and moved north, to northeast, up through Alexander County into Wilkes County. We had trees and structure damage all the way into Wilkes. The width of that storm to the right-hand side of that shaded area, that's the dairy farm on Three Forks Church Road. The Herman Dairy Farm lost their large barn, feed barn, and we had damage all the way west to the county line. So a wide path of destruction throughout the county. We had a number of calls, and counted them up this afternoon, or Celeste did in the office, 61 calls during that storm for assistance. And Commissioner Lael said, when he called Ms. Starnes, she said, "We're in the basement." About five minutes, 10 minutes till 5, I made the phone call and an email that said, "Hold all county employees till 5:15," because we really didn't want them out on the road. We didn't want them in the middle of that storm. We knew it was bad, and it was, it was coming pretty hard. Everyone's seen the newspaper, everyone's heard the reports from National Weather Service, which said an EF2 tornado at the Hickory Airport, moving into Alexander County, dropping to an EF1 tornado with the associated winds, straight-line winds, all the way into Wilkes County. Heard that report on the phone from the National Weather Service, and I said, "I just have one question. Is it possible there was more than one tornado?" He said, "It's very possible." He said, "Our confidence level in this is very low because of the wide path of destruction." This storm hit North Carolina, Cleveland County, Rutherford County, moved up into Catawba, Burke, Colwell, and Alexander into Wilkes. So it is possible we had more than one tornado, but they were able to verify one tornado coming out of Hickory. We had a number of people out there responding during the storm. Like I said, we had over 60 calls for assistance for the fire department during the storm. The fire departments were asked, "Get one lane open." You know, most of you know and have seen and heard the report, we had a large number of our roadways that were blocked by trees. So the fire departments were asked that night, "Simply get one lane open." That's what we asked for, and they did a tremendous job. We had folks from Sugarloaf Fire Department, Bethlehem Fire Department, obviously, Ellendale, Taylorville, and Whittenburg, as well as the rescue squad, responding to that area, removing trees, getting the lane open, checking on houses, checking on people in houses with trees on them. We actually made a phone call. DOT runs a program where they have an on-call person. If you have an issue and you need to close a road, if you need a tree out of a road, you call DOT, you dial that pager, he comes in and takes care of it. I called that pager, and the guy said, "Well, here's the on-call pager." I said, "I'm not talking about the on-call pager, I'm talking about every person you have." So DOT brought all their employees back to work that night and worked well after midnight that night, and then started the next day. Since Tuesday morning, the last of the 24th, we've actually requested through our office a North Carolina Bridge Crew, and that's a group of younger inmates that have been trained in the use of chainsaws. They have been here, they weren't here Friday, but every other workday up and through today, they've been here assisting DOT with tree removal. First few days was get it open, white line to white line, and since then, it's been take it off the shoulders and get it cleaned up. Come back to that in a minute. Come back to that in a minute. Chad, if you can, go to the next one. Is that our, just a quick video here that we actually pulled off the county's website. This young lady stayed outside a little bit longer than I think Russell would have that day. Can you get the play, Chad? That video was taken off of Sanchez Road, which is off of Ritchie Road in the Bethlehem Community. Like I said, we did something a little bit different this time. We got in contact with Chad Ritchie and our IT department, and Chad put up something on our county website to allow people to load up video and load up photos, so we could gather more information about this storm as part of our damage assessment. On Tuesday morning, utilizing county staff from other departments, Sheriff's Office, the Planning Department, our GIS staff, EOMS Director and his supervisor, our emergency service staff, we had some state EM folks here, we had Department of Agriculture folks here, as well as our County Forest Ranger, and we started doing damage assessments throughout the western half of our county. And that's basically a windshield assessment. You drive house to house, you identify a house with damage. If the owner's available, you talk to the owner, you ask the basic questions about insurance, an estimate on the damage, the value of the structure. So, that started on Tuesday morning, lasted Tuesday all day, Wednesday, and a little bit into Thursday. The reason for those damage assessments is to see if Alexander County would qualify for any FEMA assistance. FEMA has a standard, there's two pots. There's a public assistance piece, and for Alexander County to qualify to get reimbursed its cost, you have to exceed 1% of your annual budget. So, for us, at $38 million, we'd had to spend $380,000 on this storm response. We can only count what we utilize from Alexander County government, or if in the case of the town of Taylorville. But we can't count DOT's time, we can't count Duke Energy's time, we can discount our response. So, we're not gonna hit that threshold of $380,000. We are still gathering those numbers, and I'll tell you why in just a minute. The other is the individual assistance. And to qualify for individual assistance, you have to have 25 homes, and that's primary residents, or businesses, that are uninsured or underinsured with 40% or more damage. And we don't hit that threshold. We got a lot of damage, but we're not hitting those thresholds. If those of you can remember back about 10 years ago, the tornado came through Whittenburg, the request was, "When's FEMA showing up? When's FEMA showing up?" I haven't heard that yet in this storm, but back then, we didn't meet. And I'll tell you, the first person that asked that question 10 years ago was a US representative that came to the county to visit the storm damage and looked at me and said, "When's FEMA showing up?" I said, "They're not coming." So, the immediate assessments was to see if we qualified for that assistance. And as I said, we did not, and we're not gonna hit that. There is one holdout of an option, I guess, to say, the state of North Carolina, Joe Stanton is, he's the assistant in the EM Department at State. Joe handles recovery efforts. And Joe's combining now, he's looking at combining the numbers from all the impacted counties. And if we can hit that $13, $14 million expenditure loss statewide, then the state can ask for a presidential declaration of a disaster. And if that were to happen, we have to have all our facts and figures, and we may see some reimbursement for our citizens and for county government. But again, that may be three months down the road, so you have to put the file together and hang on to it. Let's, Chad, let's go back and do a few photos here. And I brought you just some of the photos that our staff took while we were out there. That is off of Ritchie Road in the Bethlehem Community. If you look real close, there's a house under that tree. Go ahead, Chad. That's at DG Eckard, just south of Highway 64, off, just off of 127. Large tree into a house. That's Willie McLeod Road. That mobile home's completely off its foundation, and unfortunately, these folks did not have any insurance. And those are some of the hardships we've been talking about. You guys will recognize the owners of this, you are the owners of this vehicle.
All right.
Unfortunately, this was off of Blair Road, which is north of 64. Tree fell across the garage where patrol car was parked. This is a very large feed barn that leads into the milking parlor at the Herman Dairy off of Three Forks Church Road. I had a long conversation with Mr. Herman on Friday. He was actually out of town a couple of days prior to that at a milk conference. And the, he was only about insured for about half the damage here. He had about $250,000 worth of insurance, and he had about $500,000 worth of damage. So, that's not looking good for them. I know he's trying to make some tough decisions. He and his family are talking about that now, as to what the future holds for them. This next photo, this is Ritchie and Teresa Herman's house at the corner of Lindsey Beber and Zeb Watts. If you notice, it took the roof completely off the house, and you see the barn to the right-hand side. They jumped on that Tuesday morning, staff came from where Ms. Herman works, and they put a roof back on that house, pulled out the damaged sheet rock on the inside, and they're well on their way to putting their house back together. This couple did not have any insurance. So, they making those repairs themselves and making them quickly. Next picture is jumping backwards to Bethlehem School Road, tree on a house. Some of you, if you live in that area, you may recognize that house, but some pretty good damage to the front of that house. The next one, that's a tree off of Lambert Fort, which is further north. And the next photo shows you that tree removed and what that damage looks like to the roof. Okay. Got just a couple more here, gentlemen, if you bear with me. If you're familiar with Cyper Lumber Company on Highway 64 West, it's about 1,800 center blocks blowed out of that wall and the roof collapsing. Bobby told me the other day, he had some structural water heaters, because that roof's sitting on a pallet, stacks of pallets of water heaters. So, they're still determining the damage. We know they are underinsured for their loss. And the other thing that hasn't been determined yet is the amount of damage to the contents of the building. They feel good about some of the stuff that's solid, like shingles and those kind of things. They had to remove some paint out of that building because it did have a heated room in it to store paint in. So, they've been working on that and working on it with their insurance company. But again, a large loss. This picture is the house, it was in the paper this past week. This is a mole residence off of Rinck Damn Road, just west of Bowman's Cut Over. That picture, the next picture is actually looking in the door. And I've been told that couple and their son was laying just inside that door. Had they not moved to that location just before that tree fell, they may not be with us. The next picture, and honestly, I took this picture because I just thought it was interesting. That tin's not wrapped around that tree, that tin's in that tree. And that is right behind the Teresa and Ritchie Herman house, where it came off their house and their barn. And then, one more damage picture here, and we'll hold off a minute. That is actually off of Beaver Branch, off of Liberty Grove Church Road, which is actually right across Highway 64 in front of my house. That's one of the things that we can't put a handle on. Those are small trees there, but I've been told by several of the folks that I've talked to last two weeks, there's a lot of timber on the ground from this storm, a lot of valuable timber on the ground. So, nobody's put a number on that timber as yet. Couple of things, we can back up just a minute. We started on Wednesday morning, the storm was on the 23rd, and on Wednesday morning, we had already identified a number of folks that were underinsured or uninsured. We identified some single women that live by themselves that had trees in their yard. So, on Wednesday, we started referring people to the North Carolina Baptist Men who were running an operation out of Graceville Fire Department. They'll come out, they'll help get them out of your yard, they'll help get them off your house, they'll do whatever they can, put tarps, they'll do everything they can, as well as the North Carolina Methodist Men's Conference. Their focus is a little bit different. They like to work for just the uninsured folks, and that's okay, they're still out there helping. At Wednesday afternoon late or Thursday morning, he said, "Would you give us names?" And I said, "Let me just give you a subdivision. Go to Fairfield Acres in Bethlehem. There's not a street in there that doesn't have damage, there's not a yard in there that doesn't have a tree in it. Give them a place to start." So, they've been working at that ever since they started for assistance. And then, Chad, if you'll, there's, this one's real important for everybody that's listening on the radio. The slideshow's 211. All the volunteer organizations in the state have come together in this area, the Baptist Men, Methodist Men, Red Cross, all those organizations that are willing to get out there and help people that don't have help. If you'll pick up the phone and call 211, they'll register you, get your information, and they'll pass it along to those organizations. This actually started last Friday. I was in on a couple of conference calls that week concerning this. All those VOEDs, the volunteer organizations, came together and said, "Well, we need this, so we can get their names and we can get started with the process." And realize, this storm didn't just hit Alexander County, it hit all the others, you know, Catawba, Colwell, Burke, Rutherford, Wilkes. Wilkes got substantial damage. And I'm gonna switch over real quick. I gave you all, I left on your seat, and I apologize for not having this in your packet, but these numbers keep changing. If you look at the spreadsheet I gave you, we've identified actually three areas to look at. We looked at, we'll start with agriculture. This is a large agriculture county, we know what that impact is. There's a lot of chicken houses out there with just one or two pieces of tin taken off of them. You've seen the pictures of the dairy farm at Herman Farms. And you go down that list, the other thing that we didn't really think about till the end of last week, and I actually had the guy from the Department of Agriculture came back, and he and I made a trip up north, and we talked to Ty Lowe at Perry Low Orchards. His damage to his orchard was actually in Wilkes County, but he is a business in Alexander County, so there's an impact there. We came back down and talked to Alan Deal at Deal. He lost some trees, he lost some apples, and we tried to put a decent number on that. Just yesterday, no, just Friday, I talked to Gary Morrell. He lost some apples, but he thinks he'll be able to salvage them, but still, he's not gonna get that 100% value out of them. They're now deer apples because they were blown off trees. So, we had a lot of damage to the apple crop, too. When we were talking to Mr. Lowe, we won't know about those apple trees that were blown over till next year. Do they leaf out? Do they come back? Just gotta wait and see. But if you look, and please realize, these estimates of loss are low numbers because they're our estimates. Every time after the insurance company shows up and they talk through some of these, our number was a little bit low. So, but we estimate the loss to agriculture at about $700, or $753,000 from just this storm. That's just agriculture, okay? The next section on there is residential. We had 158 citizen reports, or we witnessed reports, and that includes everything from the primary structure to a carport, an outbuilding, those kind of things. And we see about $1.5 million in damage. Some of that's uninsured, some of it's underinsured, but unfortunately, not enough to meet that FEMA threshold. And then, on the commercial side, you saw pictures of Sykes, the other places, Anchor Ritchie, Highway 90 Tire, the Bethlehem Greenhouse, and they're struggling, had a conversation with them today, and they're trying to salvage their poinsettias, because it's that season. They've had to move all their poinsettias into one greenhouse that's still intact. They're trying to make repairs herself, and they're still waiting to see how much insurance they had. But we estimate that number at, you know, $369,000, and I'll tell you, that's a low number. But if you combine all those damage estimates, we're at $2.6 million for this storm, and that's a lot. That's a lot. Commissioner Reese said it as we started. We had a lot of pireologists. I will tell you, there's a little over 18,000 electrical customers in Alexander County. At the worst point, over 11,061% were without power. Some of that was restored Monday night, the hit night Stony Point area, some of that was not restored till Friday morning. I know Duke's numbers, because Robin Sheridan's with us, in their entire service area, they installed 160 poles, 100 transformers, and 64,000 feet of wire from Monday evening till Friday lunchtime. So, they were working very hard. We don't ever give those guys, I don't think, enough credit. But we have three electric companies in the county, and all three suffered damage, and all three were here working. That's Blue Ridge coming out of Colwell, Energy United here, and Duke Energy. Great job, great work. 127 was blocked for, through Wednesday evening with power lines across 127. Not that you and I couldn't travel them in a small vehicle, but a tractor and trailer couldn't travel under them. So, that's why that section was blocked and detouring traffic. We utilized some equipment that we recently received in the multi-event support trailer that has cones and barricades. Sent that out with the Taylorville Firemen, they put them out where we asked them to put them. DOT had crews out putting out barricades. And we just ask people to respect those barricades when you see them. We can't make you not go around them, because we can't man them, we can't stand there and tell you, "You can't go," but please respect them, because they're there for a reason. We don't just randomly put them out in the road to say, "We want to block this road tonight." We don't do that, because our guys, all our volunteers do a great job, all our paid staff did a great job last week. But the county for assistance, we talked about 211, but I want to mention again, Alexander County, you guys waived the brush and vegetation fees at the landfill. And I think that'll be tremendous help for folks cleaning up. They won't have to pay that fee at the landfill to dump that brush. So, that's through the end, the last Monday in November is when the prices go back to normal. That's my report about the storm. I've got one more picture up here, and not to go back to what Commissioner Reese said. Please continue to remember Brian Keith Wilma's family. That's the young man that asked, that worked for Aspen that died on Wednesday morning removing a tree from a power line in the Ellendale Community. Mr. French and I were out on Tuesday afternoon and talking about how lucky we were. Throughout this storm, no one was hurt till Wednesday morning. Remember that family. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. I just want to thank our volunteers again and our staff, because we did something we've never had to do. We had to pull staff out of planning, GIS, and other county departments to go out and do damage assessments. That's not their daily routine. But I will tell you, our staff stepped up and did an excellent job from where I stand. Any questions?
Mr. Green, one thing I'd mention, like I say, you said Fairfield Acres, that's the neighborhood I grew up in, it's the neighborhood my parents still live. And I guess it was 1996, there was a tornado came through. It was the day I was moving home from my freshman year in college. And it came right across my parents' house, you know, right across my parents' house. And you showed that timber, and I, you know, and I remember then, basically, however many years ago that's been, 20-some years, you know, 21 years ago, it looked like some, somebody had taken the trees in the yard, essentially twisted, picked them up, and then, just as pretty as you please, laid them back down beside the holes where they had just, you know, I mean, it just pulled, you know, picked them up and then said, "Okay, lay down." And just enrose. And actually, that, that made me, you know, and it's hard, it's hard to think that there was one, that there was one tornado when there's so many different places that you go, and there, there are groves, where groves of pine trees used to be, and they're broken off about halfway up, and you can tell they were broken off by, just top twisted off. You know, and you're talking, I don't mean one tree, you know, hundreds.
Well, talking to Mr. Syke, nobody's been out there yet and had a chance to go out there and look at what that damage is. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of pines out there that were to be harvested, and they're not there anymore. They told me the good thing was, it's fall of the year, it's winter time, and they want blue, they want to deteriorate as fast as winter, so hopefully, they can get in and clear them out between now and the spring. So, hopefully, they can salvage some of that, but it's not something they were planning on cutting right away. So, you know, the storm adjusted everybody's schedule right up to including harvesting trees. You know, everybody dropped what they did and put tarps on roofs, and I will tell you that Mr. French and I were able to visit Dr. Peel. Dr. Peel was cutting trees off his daughter's house, sustained a lot of damage to her house. And it hit everybody from, as I said, the old river, the old R and N Marina area, all the way into Wilkes County. Lot of damage, but...
How do we, how do you get, I guess, how do you educate, I don't want to educate, because that assumes, that assumes the wrong thing about our citizens. How do we get the word out that you need to make sure you have enough insurance? You know, because I mean, I'm looking at these, I'm looking at these, especially the commercial, and I'm going, who, why in the world do you have a business that's a significant business and have no insurance whatsoever, or are severely uninsured, underinsured?
Mr. Lell, I'm 33 years in emergency services, and I've asked myself that question for 33 years. I do, I do hear what people say. Some people say it becomes cost prohibitive in some senses. I mean, I talked to gentlemen this past...
That's another statement.
I talked to a gentleman this week that said, "I used to have my insurance separated on different divisions of what we do." And it became cost prohibitive, so I combined it all together. Storm hit... Storm hit him, now he doesn't have enough insurance.
Right.
So, I mean, it's, it's a choice people make, you know, it's a gamble. I had a gentleman tell me one time, fire department didn't serve insurance, didn't save insurance anything. He said, because once a fire happens, it costs us, and Commissioner Reese can speak to that better than I can. I tend to disagree with him because if you can save one thing that means something to somebody, then you save something. Insurance cost is still gonna be there associated with a fire or a storm, you're gonna have that. But for thirty-three years, I've said, why did we not have enough insurance? Made me think about mine. I'm gonna go back. And all I had at my house was a small tree across my driveway. Took a couple hours to clean it up. But I wondered about my insurance as well, so that's something that's on my calendar to take care of. But I've been asking myself that question for thirty-three years, and I still don't have an answer.
Well, you can be like me and owe money on everything that you have, and the banks will require you to have enough insurance.
Yeah.
Because, you know, that's, that's the way it works for me.
Well, and not, not just, you know, I hate to say, not, not just property insurance, but life insurance as well.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, we never know when, when things are gonna happen, just like that young family up there.
Yeah.
Um, the one thing I, I wanted to mention about was being prepared when you lose power and you lose your water, and you don't know when, you know, your, your roads are gonna be cleared. So everybody needs to be prepared with, you know, at least several days' worth of water and food, if not a couple weeks' worth.
Our, our standard, we ask the public, and we try to educate people, be prepared to take care of yourself and your family for seventy-two hours. And I've, I've made some presentations recently, and I honestly start my presentation with a simple question. If I look at you right now and say, go home, don't stop at the store, don't send anybody to the store, you go home and you stay in your house for seventy-two hours without electricity and water with your family, are you prepared to do that? Now, I've done that in three different presentations in the last couple of months, and I can count on one hand, on one hand, the number of hands that went up and said, I'm prepared to do that. But that's what we ask the public to do. Be prepared to take care of yourself for that seventy-two hour period because that's essentially what it takes for us to cut the roadways out, push and clear the roads to get to you. If we have to open a shelter, we're prepared to open a shelter. I mean, I've, I've talked to some people that were very irate at me in the last two weeks because we didn't open the shelter one night. And lady was aggravated at me because her mother was on one twenty-seven, didn't have electricity, and couldn't charge her phone, and couldn't do all these things. And I certainly respect that and I understand that. But when I finally got to ask the question, I just asked if she had electricity, and then I asked if her mother could come stay with her, and the whole conversation changed. You know, and I'm not picking on that lady. I understand her dilemma with her mother's medical needs, and we made arrangements with our EMS staff to go out and help that lady get moved. But we ask you to be prepared for seventy-two hours, and Commissioner Mayberry greatly appreciate that. That's critical. Because if you can take care of yourself for seventy-two hours, we as a county, I think we can get the shelters open, and we can take care of you for a couple more days. And if you give us five, six days, we can literally have the army here because the Red Cross will start flying people in from California and Texas and wherever it's not impacted. And we have all kinds of staff. But, you know, there's some, there's some sheltering things going on right now in the state. There's some meetings taking place, and I get updated on them. Volunteerism is not what it used to be. The number of volunteers in this country is shrinking dramatically, and we depend a lot on volunteers. So I, I can't brag enough on the volunteers we have in this county and what they mean to us and what they mean for us. But again, if you're prepared as an individual, and if anybody's got any questions, the number at our office is eight two eight six three two one one six zero. If you've had storm damage and you haven't talked to anybody about it, please call our office. We'll add you to this list just in case we get some presidential declaration and we can get some money.
Mm-hmm.
We wanna help everybody that's entitled to it. We don't want anybody to be dropped through the cracks. But if you need assistance, then dial that two one one number and get your name on that list. If, if you live alone and you need help getting those trees out of your yard, dial two one one and get your name on that list. There's no guarantee they'll be there to help you, but unless you ask, you never know.
True.
Anything we can do.
Mr. Green, the, having studied and researched a lot about safety and certainly public safety, you know, we're, we're a storm away at any time. The power grid is a very fragile piece of infrastructure in the United States, and I don't think we can emphasize enough your seventy-two hours for people to be prepared because, I mean, it literally could be a lot of things. Could be a snowstorm, could be a hurricane, could be a tornado, could be a nutcase wacko. I mean, there could be a lot of things, and it seems like they're more prevalent. So the importance of being prepared to be able to take care of yourself in those situations is as, as important as maybe the last hundred and fifty years.
Absolutely. We, we all seen the news and what happened in Texas. Anything can happen on any given day, but we know how vulnerable we are to storms. They're not within our control. We can't do anything about it. We have to deal with it. But if we're prepared, that makes life a little bit easier, and, and that's what we gotta do. We gotta be prepared to take care of ourselves for just a little while, you know? My, my dad taught me that I should be able to take care of myself, so be prepared.
And you mentioned a snowstorm. You know, how many people are prepared to take care of themselves for seventy-two hours in the middle of January if an ice storm hits and you lose power? You know, not many houses built today have fireplaces or wood stoves. So how, how are you gonna keep your family warm from freezing to death?
I think our, our demand for a shelter will come more in that, in that bad winter storm than it did for this tornado. We didn't have a demand for, we actually had to call the Red Cross out to help two families. One was special medical needs the night of the storm, and the Red Cross stepped up, put those folks in a hotel. And the next day was one that didn't have a place to go, and the Red Cross stepped up for those folks. So we didn't have a sheltering need. I really believe that that bad winter storm will have the sheltering need issue, and that falls back to our DSS staff and our health department's staff, the man knows, along with our sheriff's office and our volunteers. That'll be labor intensive for county employees, and it's not something we wanna do. We've had to do that in the past.
Well, we, we have a couple of elderly facilities that are very fragile as well in those kind of situations.
That, that's what I was referring to. We actually had to evacuate one night after a small fire and put those in a gymnasium. We've got a lot of, and EMS director, Mr. Gillespie's here, but we've got a lot of medically fragile folks in this county that are on oxygen, are dependent on electricity, and, and they don't own generators, they don't have generators in their house. And the phones at nine one one light up when those things happen. And his staff was out there delivering oxygen cylinders, trading out oxygen cylinders with people to get them through the storm because, number one, their supplier couldn't get to them. So that, those are things we deal with on a regular basis, but we'd be happy to come and teach a class and, and put out the information as what should be in a seventy-two hour kit, the basic. If your water's not running, you need one gallon of water per person per day. So if you count up how many people in your house and you start adding that up, that's not just a gallon of water. It might be five, ten, twelve gallons. But I certainly appreciate you gentlemen bringing that up. That's, that's not what I came for tonight. I just wanna give you an update on the storm. We'll continue to refine those numbers as they come in. We are gathering the numbers now from county departments on their expenditures, so we have that record just in case we get that presidential declaration.
Well, we and I certainly appreciate you and everyone else that jumped out there to help and do things and serve the people.
Well, our volunteers do a great job, and we appreciate them. Mr. Gillespie stayed with me Monday night till well after midnight at the office, and he had a phone in one hand and a, and a radio in the other, and I had a phone in one hand and a radio in the other, and our fire department stepped up. We were able to talk on eight hundred megahertz to Sugarloaf Fire Department on the cell phone to Ellendale Fire Chief, and they were actually running a little operations for us out there, and they were taking care of it, and, and that worked. So in subsequent meetings with the chiefs and with our local emergency planning committee, we're gonna be talking about this response. What can we do better? What can we do to make life easier for us? And I will tell you, gentlemen, at some point, we gotta make a decision. We can't respond because we had, we had officers responding in this storm that were getting caught between fallen trees.
Mm.
And that's terrifying. I've been there, that's a terrifying situation. We don't wanna get anybody hurt because they're trying to respond. At some point, you gotta stop, and you gotta wait until the storm passes, and then go back to responding. And, and that's not to tell the public. I mean, my staff out doing damage assessments got fussed up because the lady called nine one one and said it took them two hours to get there. Literally, firemen had to cut their way through to get to that response, but they were out there doing it, and that's what it takes. So we got great volunteers in this county, we got great staff. We just gotta keep doing it, keep educating our public about preparedness and, and as well as the insurance situation. We, we've gotta get that mindset, you know? You can't be dependent on government one hundred percent of the time. You need to be able to take care of yourself for a period of time.
I'd just like to say the same thing to appreciate what you do and what all your employees and everybody involved in it. And I know, too, nerves get pretty short. I'm sure a lot of phone conversations were not very good, and I appreciate the, the people absorbing that, taking it, and, you know, employees going with stride. So I'm sure there's a little spike in our communication calls during that time, so... But, you know, just like you said, you gotta be responsible, you know, at times. And a lot of people don't even realize some of the things that you said tonight, you know, is enlightened, I'm sure, some of the people that were listening. You know, there is a lot of things that go on when you do that, so you kinda just gotta kinda hang on for a little while sometimes.
That, and that's probably the best way to say it. If you'll hang on for a little while, the, the help's coming.
Appreciate it.
And, and those phone calls are not personal. You can't take it personal. You just gotta take it for what is, what's going on in the world around them. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd recognize Leigh Ann Wisnitz, Alexander County Health Director, who's gonna give us a PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you, gentlemen. Wanted to bring to your attention a exciting new program that took a lot of years to come to fruition, but I think we're going to be state-of-the-art soon. We're calling it our new school telehealth program. We are going to pilot three schools. Our tentative start date is January. As you can imagine, there's a lot of technical things to work through, contracts, lots of details to work out. But telehealth, just in a nutshell, is using technology. For years, we have dreamed of having school-based health clinics, school-based health clinics. But we, we have a lot of schools, and we don't have enough mid-level medical providers. So how do you send a family nurse practitioner, physician assistant, mid-level provider to a school? If we did that, you're probably looking at one day a week, half a day a week. Well, what's the odds of that being the day that the child's sick? Slim. So when we, we saw this technology, it's only been in a few counties. There's only a handful of health departments doing it. There's actually a nonprofit group up in the west, Rutherford Pope McDowell, not through the health department, but a nonprofit that's been doing this technology about five years. But the equipment was huge, kinda like crash cart size, like big toolbox. Well, now, and you'll see in just a minute, it's, it's really come a long way, like everything else, all of our technology. So it's, it's, the cost has come down. It allows us to keep our provider in the health department, but put this equipment in the school. That way, we can have five-day-a-week access. The school nurse will actually be very involved. That child will go to her if they're sick, not feeling well, and then she will determine, maybe the child does need a medical visit. Of course, we're gonna inform the parents. Parents will have to sign consent, so it, it won't be just, it won't be the school nurse deciding. The parents will be very involved from day one. The parents can choose to either participate or not, but if they have chosen to participate, then the school nurse will call the health department and say, I have a child that needs to be seen today. We'll work them in our schedule, hopefully quicker than later. And then we will, the school nurse will bring that child, and in essence, just set them in front of an iPad. It's an iPad on a, you'll actually see the next, there's a picture of it on the next slide. It's now very small, will, almost laptop size. The, the equipment will actually have the stethoscope, otoscope, and so it will, the mid-level provider sitting at the health department in front of her computer will be able to see that child's inner ear, be able to hear the heartbeat, be able to hear the lung sounds, just like if she was right there with that child. Now, us adults, maybe, some of us aren't quite as technology-based, but these students, I don't think they're gonna have a problem at all talking to an iPad. They pretty much FaceTime all day long, so I think they'll be really comfortable doing that. The provider, medical provider, will be able to see rash, pink eye, and now, we are not wanting to replace their family doctor. That is not our intent. The goal of this program is to serve those students that might have trouble getting care otherwise. So if the parent can get off, wants to, take them to their private provider, that's what we want. We, we will make sure that medical provider, medical home is informed of what's going on. So they will get information after the visit. It may be that the, the parent, you know, can't get off from work that day. Transportation might be an issue. So they choose to do school telehealth with us. After that visit, we will send a note to that family physician to let them know what was done and refer back to them for follow-up if needed, depending on what's happening with that child. But we're really excited. Like I said, we're gonna pilot three schools just because we wanna start small and do it right, make sure it's gonna be successful, and then the dream is to have the technology in all the schools. You'll see it is HIPAA compliant. You know, the first thing we always worry about is making sure their health information is private and secure, and it will be. The connectivity, the company we're gonna contract with provides some of that. It is a web-based technology. You'll see the benefits. We think it's wonderful. As you know, we lack resources. We are underserved in all areas of medical services, dentists, physicians, nurses, you name it, we're underserved. Orthodontics, go down the list. We're underserved in everything, so this helps increase medical access. As you can see up there, we are not wanting to replace, there's enough work for all of our medical providers in the community, so we, we simply want to help and be a resource. We're gonna see any child that wants to. If they're insured, we'll build their insurance, just like if they went to the doctor. If they have Medicaid, Medicaid covers the service. If they're uninsured, we will see them like we do every day, and it's based on the family's ability to pay. So most of that didn't change. Surprisingly, the federal and state government is very supportive of telemedicine. That's nice to hear, isn't it? Usually, we're not always as excited about federal government, but actually Medicaid sees this as a way of increasing access to medical care. If we can get them early medical care, we reduce emergency room visits, we, we reduce costs all the way around, so that's our intent. The parents will not be left out. The school nurse will call the, even though we've had consent signed, we've done a medical history, we've got all of our forms, that school nurse will still call the parent first to say, you know, your child presented to me today with whatever's going on. I see you signed the school telehealth form. Do you still want to participate? I think today might be a good day to, to try that service. The parent says yes, they call us, we do the visit. The, after the visit, the child, depending on what's going on, may need to go home if they're contagious. That's the other great part. If we do think they're contagious, we can hopefully get them out of the school quicker and prevent the spread of flu, because flu season is coming, or whatever's going on, strep throat. But also, if the child's not contagious, they can go back to class. Then the provider will call the parent back, say, review the history, because it may be that the form was filled out two or three months ago, or six. And so review, you know, is there any allergies, anything different? Your child on any different medicines we need to know about? Almost like if you were talking to the physician afterwards in the doctor's office. So that same follow-up, that same teaching, and then we will electronically prescribe if they need medication and treatment, all while the parent stays at work, hopefully. And the child stays at school if they're not contagious. But we do plan to start in January, and it is, the great part is, the school system's not really having any cost, minus their staff and their nurses are gonna have to be very involved. I really hope it saves them time, though, instead of having to keep that child in the saves them time, though, instead of having to keep that child in the office or in the sick room while, you know, they wait for a parent to get there. It may be that the child could stay at school. So hopefully, it will actually get the school nurse back to doing something else quicker. But the equipment is actually being funded by a Blue Cross and Blue Shield Foundation grant. So we're real excited about that. We already have the staff at the health department, so it's not taking, it's costing us nothing to pilot these three schools since it's grant-funded. So as you can tell, I'm very excited, because we can be there five days instead of that half-day. And I will certainly come back to you after we have some information, have piloted it. The, the three schools that we're gonna start with is Stony Point Elementary, East Middle School, and the high school. That kind of was strategically done. They're kind of feeder schools. We had a consultant that, that helped us, that had done some of the other counties, to think through that, what makes the most sense. What some of it is, Stony Point is because it's, you know, difficult for that community to access care up here. Transportation seems to be really difficulty down there. It's not one of our bigger schools. But then the middle school is because Stony Point feeds into that. So if you teach those parents the services and get your forms filled out, they've got students then that are either in the middle school or that student will move up and will understand the service. The high school was simply because it's our largest population. And that was a hard decision, 'cause we want it for all the schools. But I think this is a great place to start, to pilot, and I hope to bring back great successes to you. I think this technology, you know, we're, we're gonna be early in being innovative and some of the first to, to be successful. EMS director and I have a dream to, to move into more advanced things in the future, too, with some, with some telehealth out in the field, too, with some of our fragile elderly, too. So just, just trying to get medical care out there where it needs to be. So one tiny step at a time.
Yeah, can I ask a question? And you may have said this, and I, I just missed it.
That's all right. I talk fast. I know you've got a long agenda.
How, how long will this pilot last before you have some numbers, you know, before you might look at expanding?
That, well, my dream's always very progressive. So, you know, I'd love to, to come back next year and be, be ready to do at least half the schools, if not all of them. The, the pilots purely to, let's try three, let's see if people are gonna use it and access it. The equipment's ours. It's purchased, it's bought. The cost to maintain it, it's just a few hundred dollars a month. So you're talking about five visits a month will keep us in the, in the black. And, and that's really the goal, is just to not cost the county any money and keep it financially.
Five visits a month that you bill to Medicaid, right?
Uh-huh. Or insurance, or...
Right, okay.
Yes. And that, that's really not a lot.
Yeah.
'Cause the cost, I mean, we have a family nurse practitioner at the health department, you know, so we're working this in with her schedule. As you know, we have a fair amount of no-shows, so I think this is wonderful. You know, if we have a patient needs to reschedule the school calls, we just had a cancellation, we put it in there. These visits should really take ten, fifteen minutes. It's gonna be limited. We're not gonna see everything in the world. It's gonna be your pink eye, your sinusitis, you know, sore throat, strep throat, you know, those common, ordinary run-of-the-mill, not your child that's got seizure disorder, or, you know, really needs a specialist, or has a very complex medical condition. It's, it's more of your, you know, why is this child here today with a fever? You know, do we need antibiotics? What's going on?
Does, does this kind of visit bill the same as a in-person visit?
It does, yes. Actually, Medicaid pays a little bit more for the technology fee, just a few dollars, but...
I guess, are there, if you expand it, anticipate additional grant funds to purchase the equipment?
That, it's, you know, I'm always out there looking. Every year, they do have this same equipment grant. So I've, I've known this was out there for a while, and when the grant came across my desk, I went, "Ah, this is it." So, and they actually funded us and Burke County. Burke County was not through the health department. It was actually through a, a medical provider. So there's only, uh, less than five health departments doing telehealth. So I'm pretty proud that we're progressive enough to think, for the, thinking to the future. I think this is...
How much does the equipment cost by itself?
The equipment's less than a thousand dollars for each unit, $9.99.
So you can...
Versus, it used to be, five years ago, those big units were $20,000.
Right.
So...
So you could potentially...
You're talking about a thousand dollars per...
Yeah, pretty quickly.
And I think you, you know, with use, you could pay for it very quickly. You know, you're talking about less than ten visits would pay for a unit. And then the units, you know, the life of those units are years, especially if you take care of them. But we still have, January's, we were hoping to move a little quicker, but I'll tell you, when you start writing policies and getting forms and trying to make them very simple and getting, getting lots of policies and procedures and protocols in place and contracts, January's pretty realistic, for those parents to see information coming out. Get through the holidays so they don't lose all that. And then hopefully, this six months, at the end of this school year, we'll have good data and we can make a good decision and, and talk with the school system about going forward for next school year. And be ready to send those forms out with all the first new school enrollment. That was kind of our goal, but the grant just didn't, they, they didn't work with us like they, we were hoping. The timelines just didn't match, so...
Right.
But yes, there's a couple of opportunities for other grants.
Okay. Any other questions, gentlemen?
Sounds good.
Outstanding, John.
Appreciate it.
We sure appreciate your support.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll let you know how it's going.
All right.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd recognize Doug Gillespie, EMS Director.
Just wanted to say thank you for having me tonight, giving me a chance to speak. I'm here to bring a proposal to the exception to the formal bidding process. I'm here tonight to ask the board to give approval to forego the formal bidding process as we normally do and use the piggyback exception with Northwestern Emergency Vehicles. We've been extended the opportunity to follow the piggyback procedure for the ambulance purchase with Johnston County Ambulance in North Carolina. The protocols for the piggyback exception has been followed. It's been less than one year since the formal bid process. And number two, the, the public a notice waiver was placed in the total times about a month ago, and it ran for two weeks. And I think it was only supposed to have to run for one week. We're looking at an E-450 Ford ambulance, and the price last year we looked at was $134,998. And Johnston County bought four ambulances, and so that brought the price down pretty good. And we can get it for a little over, less than a thousand dollars more, $135,822. Any questions?
Any questions?
Doug, I know, I asked this last year, 'cause we've done this before. Up until this ambulance, we, this is the first type three, or...
This will be, no, this, no... No, this will be the, the type three that we're used to getting.
Okay.
It will be a gas-powered compared to a diesel. The, last year, they stopped Chevrolet and Ford stopped making the diesel ambulances for the van style, the E-450 is the van style.
Okay, the van, okay.
The F-style would be your truck style. Some safety issues and stuff like that. But the prices on the diesel went up to, when I was first quoted earlier, it was $170,000, and they've actually gone up to about $178,000. So, and one of the reasons why I liked, or would wanna use the gasoline engine this year, we've contacted multiple different counties, talked to Darrell at the garage, talked to Josh, we talked to more, or multiple different counties. They're not having any issues with the, the gas-powered. But next year, we're having some issues with a couple of our older trucks. We have one right now that's actually in, broke down, and it's probably not worth fixing, but we can remount to these gasoline engine ambulances for approximately about $80,000 to $85,000 for some of my figures that we've done over the last couple of weeks. And so possibly, we could look at maybe remounting two ambulances next year and actually get, get the two ambulances for the price of the one diesel, is what, what my hopes would be.
Those B-10s?
Yes, sir. And again, going with Northwestern Emergency Vehicle, and I think it says in your packet that just up the road, about an hour, hour and fifteen minutes away, heck of nice people, we call and say, "Hey, we've got some issues. We'll bring it up here. We'll get it done." And they'll usually jump in it pretty quick and get it handled. It's gonna take more than a couple of days. And I told you, we do have one ambulance that's gone down. They've offered to say, "Hey, you're down a spare ambulance. We still have two." There's occasions that we need three or four, but he says, "If you need one, call me. I'll have one brought down to you. You can come pick it up." And they've done that before also. So they're real good to work with.
That's good.
Any other questions?
So does this need to be two motions?
You can do one motion.
One.
Okay.
I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we waive the formal bid requirement by using the exception for previously bid contracts. And I also move to proceed with contract negotiations for the purchase of one type three ambulance manufactured by American Emergency Vehicles.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Do I have a second?
Second, second.
A second. Any discussion on this motion? Are you none? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Have a good day. At this time, I will recognize Vice Chair Ronnie Reese.
I'll read the proclamation for the recognizing the NAACP Alexander County Branch, and I'll read that. Proclamation recognizing NAACP Unit Number 5361, Alexander County Branch. Whereas the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, herein called NAACP, founded February the 12th, 1909, recently celebrated its 108th birthday, commemorating 108 years of dedication, struggle, and achievement to further the cause of fair play, justice, and equal opportunities for minorities in this nation. And whereas, under the guidance of its founders, Mary Wyatt Ovington, William English Walling, and Henry Moskowitz, the NAACP has been known as a strong figure in the advancement of civil rights during an era when segregation and injustice were bluntly practiced as a social norm. And whereas, under the guidance of its founders and some of its early leaders, like the legendary W.E.B. DuBois, the NAACP began with only three members and has become a large and powerful body of citizens with over 400,000 members, righting the wrongs of injustice and equality. And whereas, the NAACP has led the civil rights struggle, making significant gains for quality education, equal employment, and equal housing opportunities. And whereas, the rightful gains that blacks have made to ensure equal justice have been largely due to the persistence and determined efforts of the NAACP's leadership and membership and those sympathetic to its cause. And whereas, during the 108-year history of the NAACP, the association has worked unremittingly within the system to achieve equal opportunity and justice for all citizens. And whereas, the NAACP's state conferences, branches, youth councils, and college chapters across the country practice annually in the NAACP Birthday Celebration each February. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize the NAACP Unit Number 5361, the Alexander County Branch, for the efforts and achievements of this organization in the community. Adopted this the seventh day of November 2017.
We had to entertain a motion to accept the proclamation, recognize the NAACP Unit Number 5361, as read by Chairman Reese.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion concerning this?
I'll just point out one thing. The date is wrong on the proclamation, so, uh, November the sixth, it should be the sixth day of November.
Okay, duly noted.
With correction.
Okay. Any other observations? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. Okay, at this time, I'll recognize Commissioner Lael for another proclamation.
This evening, I would, I'll read proclamation declaring December 1st through December 31st, 2017, as Christmas in Bethlehem. Whereas, the Bethlehem Community Development Association has been a longtime supporter of improvements and quality of life issues in the Bethlehem area. And whereas, Alexander County Government wishes to assist the Bethlehem Community Development Association in promoting events that increase community spirit and offer opportunities for fellowship during the Christmas season. And whereas, the Bethlehem Starlighting has been a fixture of the Christmas season for 39 years, annually drawing thousands of citizens to the Bethlehem area. And whereas, the annual Bethlehem Starlighting will take place on December 2nd, 2017. And whereas, a live nativity drive-through will occur December 8th through 10th, 2017. And whereas, these Christmas events promote values and morals which are the binding fiber of the community, and these events are strongly supported by the Bethlehem Community Development Association, area churches, businesses, and citizens. Be it therefore resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners declares December 1st through December 31st, 2017, as Christmas in Bethlehem, adopted the sixth day of November 2017.
Okay, at this time, I'd accept a motion for the proclamation declaring December 1st through December 31st, as Christmas in Bethlehem.
Mr. Chairman, I will move to approve the proclamation declaring December 1st through December 31st, 2017, as Christmas in Bethlehem.
Second. Okay, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion concerning the motion? Are you none? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, likewise. Okay, at this time, I'll recognize County Manager Rick French, who has several items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to let, let everyone know that the North Carolina Department of Transportation is proposing to improve North Carolina Highway 127 from Conninger Mill Road north of Hickory in Cataba County to Ritchie Road north of Bethlehem in Alexander County. The project proposes to provide upgrades to the existing roadway from two lanes to four lanes with a median, and the project will also consider replacement of the existing bridge over Lake Hickory. That public meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 14th, 2017, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Mount Bethel, United Methodist Church on Highway 127. And we urge the public to attend. It's, it'd be a very good informational meeting, and it's something that we've talked about for quite, quite a few years.
Be a huge project, replacing that bridge.
It will.
Yeah. I don't know, I believe that was 2005. Is that when the bridge was shut down for several days? I believe it was 2005.
Right.
After those, several hurricanes went through at one time, and they had to shut the bridge for several days because the water, I believe, was within about three feet of the top of the bridge, so...
Yeah, it's been more recent than that. It was shut down for a couple of weeks.
Yeah. It, it's, there's a lot of problems with that bridge. It needs to be replaced.
But yeah, the, it has a tendency to unhook itself from the Cataba County side. I don't know how many, I mean, seriously, they've repaired DOTs, they've repaired it multiple times in the last five, I mean, in the last five, I don't know, ten years. But yeah, it somehow continues to move itself away from Cataba County.
Trying to get to Alexander County.
Yeah.
Well, that could have a huge economic impact if you look at, and I'm sure this project is out in the future, but the future will be here before we know it. But four lanes, that's, that's significant.
It certainly is.
It's, this has been in the works a long, long time. And when I say a long, long time, um, my grandfather sold the DOT right away for this exact same project in 1971. So...
Government wheels move fast, you know?
You betcha. Government moves on with it.
Mr. French, continue on.
As mentioned earlier, we'd just like to make sure the public understands that effective immediately tipping fees for vegetation and brush will be waived at the Alexander County landfill. Normal, normal fees will go back into effect Monday, November, November the 27th, 2017. If you have questions, please contact Josh Mitchell at 632-9767, 632-9467. Can we keep going?
Yes, sir, please.
Next item we have is something we do each year with CBCC. There's a form that the chairman signs, and this is already in our budget. It includes $32,000 that goes to CBCC. $22,000 of that is for compensatory education class, and $10,000 is for the regular county appropriation to CBCC, and we need that approved as part of the budget process. We've, that money, again, is in the budget already.
So we need to...
Yes, sir, the approval of it.
Okay, gentlemen, we've got the North Carolina Community College System College budget. We need a motion on that to approve that as presented.
Make a motion that we approve the compensatory education class and, oh wait a minute, what was the rest of it?
And regular...
Oh, yeah, and the regular county appropriation to CBCC as stated.
Okay, have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion of this motion? Are you none? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. Mr. French?
The next item we have is a resolution approving an interfund capital loan for equipment purchase. As earlier, as adopted with the budget ordinance, 2017, 2018, there were funds set aside for a new wheel loader for the landfill. And what, how this works, the general fund, that basically loaned the money, and that money will be paid back through, by the solid waste fund, saving the interest. The piece of equipment costs about $160,000, and this is something that was part of the budget process that we did, and we just need a motion to approve the resolution approving this loan for equipment purchase.
Okay, gentlemen, you've heard the recommendation, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the resolution approving an interfund capital loan for equipment purchased at the landfill.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion concerning this motion?
Trash is expensive, and nobody likes to pay for it.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. All right, Mr. French?
The 2018 Alexander County Commissioner's meeting schedule is enclosed. We're following the same schedule as we are now. We do have one meeting a month, except for the months of May and June for the budget process and meetings. And so, meetings will be held at 6:00 p.m. here at the Alexander County CBCC campus, and we recommend approval of the schedule.
Gentlemen, someone like to make a motion to approval of the 2018 County Commissioner's meeting schedule as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the meeting schedule.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion concerning this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. All right.
Next, next is the holidays, 2018 Alexander County Holiday Schedule, and we're just following the state schedule for holidays as we have this current, 2017. So we'd recommend the 2018 schedule be approved.
Entertain a motion to approval of the 2018 Alexander County Holiday Schedule.
Make a motion that we approve the 2018 Alexander County Holiday Schedule as proposed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Multiple seconds. Okay, any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed likewise.
We have two appointments to the Board of Health. Appoint Dr. Thomas Ryder and appoint Dr. Richard Williams for three years.
I believe you've got some information about those two individuals. Entertain a motion to approve those two recommendations?
Make a motion to approve Dr. Thomas Ryder and Dr. Richard Williams, both to three-year terms on the Board of Health.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I'll just make a comment. I know both of these gentlemen, Tom Ryder's one of the most intelligent people I have ever met, and Richard Williams is, is very hardworking, and through his, his work with the Bethlehem Business Association and some other things, you know, in Bethlehem, he does have, he has a heart for community service.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. Mr. French, budget amendments?
We have several budget amendments tonight. Budget amendment number 19 is the budget for refund for the North Carolina Juvenile Justice for 2016, 2017 funds that service providers were unable to spend due to the classification of juvenile cases. Service providers are reimbursing the county for the unspent funds. The next several budget amendments are, Items Alter wants us to change, we have a 5% contingency limit, so we have to amend the county water and sewer fund annual budget to meet the 5% contingency limit. That's budget amendment number 20. Number 21 is to amend the Bethlehem Water Fund annual budget to meet the 5% contingency limit. Number 22, and it's not additional, it's no additional funds, it's just, number 22 is amend the Bethlehem Sewer Fund annual budget. Number 23 is amend the landfill, amend the landfill closure fund annual budget to meet the 5% contingency limit. And the last budget amendment, number 24, is the budget for the true-up of payments for the fiscal year 2017, tax revenues in excess of 2017 dispersments to fire districts, and there's no true-up for the Ellendale Fire Department. And we pay fire departments on an equal payment each month, and then we true-up at the end of the year.
Okay.
I'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
Gentlemen, any questions on those amendments for Mr. French?
Mr. French, just to make a, make note on the, on those amendments, 20, 21, 22, 23, basically, we are moving money from the contingency line item to the particular line, the, you know, I guess you say the particular line item, which nets an actual increase in expenditures of zero.
That's correct.
Just wanted to make, just wanted to make that clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any other questions concerning these? Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved to approve budget ordinance amendments number 19 through 24.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. Mr. French, County Manager's report.
Our sales tax numbers for, really, are, they're running 7%, ahead of this time last year, and this is just for July, but that's a good start for us. So far this year, we've collected $780,970.37. And again, that's 7% ahead, the new sales tax for $241,847.36, and that's also running 7% plus ahead. Also want to let you know the Sure Tape Sewer Project is underway, as well as the work at, on the industrial park, on the sewer lift station, both those are going on. Of course, the public hearing was held tonight on the Stoney Point Elementary School Sewer Project. The planning meetings are underway with the engineering firms, both the Bethlehem Sewer and Water Projects, and those reports are due, preliminary reports are due December 1st, and all work is running on schedule. City of Hickory crews are currently working on some small water projects that were in our budget. They're working on projects on Teetown Road, Alton Road, and Liberty Lane. This, actually, this group of smaller water projects had been on the drawboard since 2013. Saturday is the Rocky Face Park, Rocky Face Rock climbing festival, and the Run for the Dogs Trail Race. Both events are at the park. Also, November the 10th is Veterans Day, and we'd like to honor our veterans that day. Also, our next regular meeting is December 4th, 2017. That's all I have in the manager's report. I have some things for closed session.
Any questions on the County Manager's report? Okay, hearing none, at this time, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in our book.
Okay, have a motion, do we have a second? Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. At this time, we will go into closed session. North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, 4, 5, and 6 Economic Development, Contractional and Personnel, and we will only, we will reconvene only for adjournment. Thank you.